Take those from the ledger.
And sobbing, and she said, you're taking.
Any of you want to be the solicitor for the day?
I could.
I agree.
Acting solicitor.
I agree. They just sit here and every now and then we ask your question and they say, yeah, that's fine.
Morning, we have the light. We were looking, we had a lot of people trying to go in the elevator today.
We were just interviewing for your replacement. Good for you.
I think, I think Nikki's quote was, if he can do it, I can do it. I believe that.
Hey, good morning, it's 10 a.m. We ask you to please rise at your table for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance before we convene our commissioners' public meetings. Heavenly Father, instruct and teach us in ways you want us to proceed. May we walk with you daily. I pray we will always seek your direction and guidance first. Let us not make decisions based on our limited knowledge. But let us act based on your infinite wisdom. Next Monday, we'll recognize Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. Now this year's anniversary. We encourage all Americans to volunteer to help their communities promote equal rights for all Americans. Pray that all racism will cease. We know your love sees no color. And we're all equal before you. That is the measure of your love, and we should honor and follow the example you set and instruct us to do. Where we follow, we ask, we pray, we ask, we pray, we ask you to listen and hear us. How can we ask that of you when we cannot listen and hear each other? We pray to be the example of love and gentleness that's seen between a parent and their child. May we share that example with our fellow neighbor. In the spirit of unity and love, let us listen to each other, treat one another with respect. And these things we humbly present to you in your name. Amen.
Politically, we're just considered black. United States of America, due to republic, we would just say, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, free, just, just, just.
During this time, we'll convene our commissioners' public meeting. And we'll ask for approval to amend to the previous meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All fair side. Will you any public comment on agenda items only at this time? Okay, moving on to informational highlights. Reagan.
Morning, sir.
Good morning.
We have one informational item. Uh, in the controller's office, Deputy Controller Nikki Gottschall has assumed duties of the Lycoming County Controller with the recent retirement of Esther Rogers with the effective date January 11th, 2025.
Okay, congratulations, Nikki.
Wait, we don't get to vote on that?
Okay. Look forward to working with you. You've done a great job as deputy, and you'll do a great job as a controller now. Thank you. And personnel actions.
Approved the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions outlined here in attachment pay. In planning and community development, Jennifer Bates, administrative specialist, pay grade six, full-time, nineteen dollars, point two four one six cents per hour, seventy-five hours per pay period. This is an anticipated start date of January 21, 2025. Also, planning and community development, Jaden Northrop, clerk three, pay grade four, full-time position, fifteen dollars, point three six zero eight cents per hour, seventy-five hours per pay period with an anticipated start date, January 27, 2025. In the pre-release center, Cecilia Miller, resident supervisor, union position, full-time, nineteen dollars and twenty cents per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date, January 21, 2025. Also in the pre-release center, Kate Faith Kowaleski, resident supervisor, union, union position, full-time, nineteen dollars and twenty cents per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date, January 27, 2025. Uh, in the prison, Samantha Ulrich, correctional officer, union, full-time, twenty dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date, January 27, 2025. Also in the prison, Kane Jones, correctional officer, union, full-time, twenty dollars per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date, January 27, 2025. And the final one, soil conservation, Molly Stevens, resource conservation technician, pay grade nine, full-time position at forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy point three one five cents per year, seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated start date, January 27, 2025.
Hey, we have motion accept personal actions.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Is there any questions or comments? Are you done all of your side?
Aye.
Hey, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
It's time to recess commissioners' public meeting for the board of assessments, revisions, and we'll convene the board of assessment revisions at this time. Good morning, bro.
Good morning, commissioners. I am seeking your approval for a real estate refund for all these. They had filed a real estate appeal in 2023, and it went to court, and we settled out of court. The refund amount is from the 2024 county taxes. That is two thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-four cents.
Your motion approved.
Yeah, I'm.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Is this, um, is this the Little South Township or the one out?
No, it is for Little South Township.
It was just, uh, they challenged what the value was.
Yes, they challenged the assessment.
All fair side.
Aye.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Journey of board of assessment provisions at this time, or we convene the commissioners' public meeting for action items. Nikki.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I'm seeking your approval to ratify the engagement letter with Bayford's Philly in regards to the 2022 recreational authority audit in the amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Your motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Questions or comments? Are you done all of your side?
Aye.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
Five point two, um, first, couldn't be here. Got it for them. Seeking your approval on board of the bid and contract with H and P Construction Incorporated to the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars. A polling place renovation project. This is a 2025 budget item. Uh, they were the little bitter. Actually, we're the company that did the first phase or first thirty-one polling places. This will round out the thirty-two.
Okay, so let's take care of all of them then?
Uh, almost all of them. And they did a outstanding job on the the first.
Okay, good. All right, now motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, three, and five, four, Beth. John.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning, Beth.
Um, on the first item I have is to to seek your approval on the amendment to the agreement for Keystone Communications in the amount of twenty thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. This is for a microwave connectivity um, between ourselves and Snyder and Union Counties to make a radio backbone for interconnectivity. This is an eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollar project that um, we have managed to get PMS to pay a little over seventy percent of, in which our price is now twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
That's good news. Thank you.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Fine.
And the second item I have is to ask your approval and signatures on the 911 statewide interconnectivity grant agreement. This is the grant that PMS sends. Now they do it in a grant form. Um, and this is for through radio connectivity between counties in order to assist each other. Um, and you know, interconnectivity regional radio system. And I don't have the exact amount in front of me, but I believe it's a little under five hundred thousand. PMS.
Okay. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions for Jason all? Okay, all fair side.
Aye.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Five point five, Jason.
Um, five point five, vote to approve repairs to 2009 Sterling and Sarah Packard truck in the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-one cents, completed by Sunbrake Motors. This is part of our maintenance repair budget, commissioners. This is the repair and replacement of the regeneration system that these trucks have. Fortunately, they don't allow us to strip diesel engines of the regen and go forth in the death fluid systems that we are now using.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions for Jason at all? All fair side.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
I'm Simon Leslie.
Morning.
Morning, Leslie.
Five point seven, um, seeking your approval to purchase, oh, sorry, five point six. I'm seeking your approval to renew our GIS Esri software in the amount of eighty-two thousand dollars. Um, this is used, um, 911 and in the planning department.
This is yearly.
This is yearly. This is the last year of our three-year contract.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Questions for Leslie?
Um, Leslie, so their system between the the two offices, or is it the same for everything, or are there some separations?
Um, I believe there's some separations. Um, yeah, and I wish Beth would have stayed on the phone because it incorporates their 911 system also. So it's the mapping system. So it takes care of all of that, too. Because I asked the question, so I'm like, hmm, is there a, is there a, is there a different option, or is there? And this is the only option there is to incorporate with the new 911 generation that's coming along, I think, in a couple months.
I would just like to see as, as we move forward with stuff like that. They're, they're all in sync on the same.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, this, they're all incorporated with the Esri stuff. Yeah.
Okay. All fair side.
Aye.
Um, five point seven, I'm seeking your approval to purchase a security server um, for the camera project that's going to happen in, in 2025. Um, and this is in the amount of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and fifteen cents. Um, and we've been working with Maya for Act 13 funding.
We should come out of that, suppose funds, Maya. All right, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And, uh, how many cameras would this cover the server?
Um, so this is so that we can bump up what we're actually storing today, which is like 21 days. So this will give us a longer retention and also be able to add better cameras and more cameras.
Okay, good. All right, all fair side.
Aye.
Hey, thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, I'm gonna handle five, eight, and five, nine.
Okay.
Seeking your approval on back Pete Grant Agreement Extension Request for the South Williamsport Area Relief Well Project through January 31st, 2026. Um, this is for the two separate grants of one million uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar award towards the construction of the new wells both Williamsport and South Williamsport. Time extension is finished. And he's working with the consultant on the Southland of design and supported working with their consultant on their.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all fair side.
Aye.
Uh, five point nine, officials seeking your approval on the people board pending agreement for the Williamsport Area Cross Pipes Phase Two Project in Shiloh Canyon Excavating, uh, incorporating the amount of four million, three hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the rehabilitation of the cross pipes of this project, part of the federal DDA grant, also a 2025 approved budget item.
Their motion?
I'll make the motion.
Maya, is this coming out of the grant, DDA grant?
Yes, I just finished the job.
Yeah. Okay. So the monies will come out of that, that grant? That's the, the five point six billion that we got back in 2019, 18?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's coming out of that grant?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Uh, I just wanted to point out that it's expected to start on the 20th of January, so it's Thursday.
Expected.
Um, this is for the rehab of 25 cross pipes. And expect to complete in about five months.
Okay, good. Okay, all fair side.
Aye.
Okay. Morning, Jenny.
Morning, commissioners. Great, I have two items for you. The first one, uh, five point ten is to vote to approve the 2023-2024 Fair Subagreement Subrecipient Agreement with Ashbury Foundation. An amount of fifty-nine thousand dollars, and this is for the regional, um, Albright Life's Regional Parental Assistance Program. It helps, um, seniors staying in residence.
Okay, motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions for Jenny on this?
No.
Green. All fair side.
Aye.
Great, and five point eleven is a vote to approve the 2023-2024 Fair Subrecipient Agreement with Sacred Truth Ministries in the amount of fifty-one thousand dollars, and this is for their Hassa Hope program. And they're a new, um, fair recipient in this program here.
Okay, good. Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Questions or comments? Fair side.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jenny.
Thanks.
And twelve through five fifteen, Maya.
Good morning, everyone. All right, so the first item I have for you is vote to approve the agreement with B-Square Consulting Group. This is the Public Defender's Office for Forensic Biotechnology Services.
Okay. And that is 2025 budget item.
Yeah, and they put safeguards in there because as a result, they knew of upcoming cases that were coming. So yes.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
And the next item I have for you is vote to approve the certification of 2025 county funds for agricultural land preservation in the amount of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Um, participating counties are required by PA Department of Ag to show their county appropriation for purchase of ag conservation easements. And so that's what we're doing here. And then typically by March 1st, the State Farm Land Preservation Board will announce the grant and matching, um, funds for the county. But typically, we receive, we receive about a return of approximately five to six dollars on, um, each county dollar.
Okay. Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Uh, the next item I have for you is vote to approve the assignment of acknowledgement agreement with BBLB Company. Doing business as, um, Julie's Coffee and BP Holdings. So what has happened is that, um, the lease is still going to stay here, but the company that was running it, um, has sold it to someone else and assigned it. So the restaurant and everything will stay as is. We just have a new owner.
Okay, it'll be a new lease?
Yeah, and that's what it'll do. This assigns the lease requirements over.
All right. I just asked Commissioner Serbit about that last night.
Yeah. We didn't want to make it a formal announcement until we did it here, and, and he would have felt comfortable.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
And the next time I have for you is vote to approve the Intergovernmental Agreement for Intrusion Detection Services with the Pennsylvania National Maintenance Agency. Um, this is just a cybersecurity grant program that we've historically participated in through our IT department. And, uh, this will help get us money back for some of our security equipment that we have in place.
Okay. Good. Motion accept. How many for motion?
I'll second.
All fair side.
Aye.
And I think the next one, Matt was gonna try to pinch it with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Uh, Commissioner, seeking your approval on the submission of the grant application to the Appalachian Regional Committee for the feasibility study for juvenile justice, uh, and training center in Lycoming County. Uh, that is just the project name on the grant. This grant application has been restructured to include the earning the feasibility to meet the immediate needs for juvenile secure detention and shelter care locally. And to continue the feasibility study, uh, for the larger scope of juvenile justice.
The cost?
Uh, the cost remains the same even with additional scope added to the feasibility study.
Seventy, seventy-three thousand, five hundred. Fifty percent of it is thirty-six thousand.
So the county be responsible for half. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
So any questions or comments?
Yeah.
I would just, I'd say I'd just like to make one that we don't budget it for. That map.
I mean, my question, maybe you could answer this, because I asked yesterday. Um, you know, it's great that they're matching the feasibility study, but we're still, we're chipping in thirty-six thousand dollars or thirty-eight thousand dollars or whatever the amount is. Aren't we doing this study to find out the answers that we already know?
We know the answer as to the feasibility, um, because of a lot of research done by Matt Johnson in juvenile service department, juvenile probation department, and also, um, you know, Mark Mortimer at the Delphoy, who's a contractor that handles a lot of juvenile services for us. Between the two events that aided and that failed, it shows clear feasibility for high-capacity standard. The Delphoy's estimate was a hundred and consultant we've been talking with says start with fifty beds and then increase it as the band warrants. Um, but certainly there's a, a strong feasibility art now. Um, however, to swing money for something like this, you have to prove it. You have to have a document that says it and leaves it all out and. Also, the other half of of the, the valuation would be the cost. And the study will look at the cost of a small center, like rehabbing a, an existing facility to, to house, um, our local population only for the cost of a regional center, which is state and other counties that are not county, but also used. So it'll look at both scenarios and identify costs for each scenario, um, and designs preliminary design. So, um, for that price, actually, for what you're getting, extremely good. Uh, the original request made back in June was for ninety thousand dollars. I think they will work with the consultant, bring that cost down.
So, um, there's definitely a need for a juvenile detention center. That's, that's clear. There's a difference between a detention center and a rehabilitation center. I think we're talking about apples and oranges. And rehabilitation center is a long-term plan. Detention center is something that's immediately needed, and it's an issue across the nation, especially across the state. It's a concern of Lycoming County. We have spoken to the courts, representatives of courts, and we've spoken to the head of juvenile probation. And the number we're getting is to start at 12. Start a facility that holds 12 people. We had an individual come up from this, from the state that came up and, and visited our PRC. No secret that our PRC, our pre- release facility is two-thirds empty. We have needs of juveniles, we have needs of mental health, and we just don't have the numbers due to many reasons identified by the courts why the facility isn't being utilized to its capacity. And we just don't want to lock up people for the sake of locking them up. Okay? We have, but we have to make sure the building is utilized because the price tag's about two million a year. So as we've discussed, taking part of that facility and having a separate entrance and use utilizing for juvenile detention, um, 12 to 24 beds and leasing it out to a agency that does, deals with juveniles, put it out for an RFP and let them run the facility for the county. That would take care of our immediate needs. That's what we need to address right now, not five years from now, not 10 years from now, but right now. And juvenile is on board with that, the courts are on board with that. The numbers we're being told are 12 to 24. To address those immediate needs. We spoke to DA the other day about it, and he's fine with that as a short-term resolution. So the question is, do we put money into a study for something that's long-term that we don't know if it's ever going to materialize? Or do we address our immediate needs? Which everybody's on board with. And that's utilizing a building that's already built and rehabbing part of that to take care of our needs for the juveniles that need to be detained. Because right now, um, there are several that are on a bracelet that could be detained if the court chose to go that route, and they had that avenue to, as an option. Um, so that's kind of like where we're, where we're at right now that we've discussed, am I, am I accurate? And is there anything you guys want to add? Well, I was gonna ask, I'd even ask Maya, well, since here, since it's not budgeted, where would we take this money?
It's the agency. So it's very weak.
Right.
Would we be able to use Act 13 in a safety manner because it's correctional?
If, if it were truly that, but it's a feasibility study, so, and again, then we would have other issues. State doesn't like that because they're matching state funds to state funds, so it's a double benefit for what they all want here. Well, actually, this is a federal grant program, the Appalachian Regional. But it would still be the same. It'd still be the same.
So these are the numbers that are being told by us by the courts, juvenile probation. The gentleman that oversees the juvenile process throughout the state who came up and explored the PRC facility, he said basically to the head of juvenile probation, a good place to start is 12 beds. To start for Lycoming County. I believe right now, from what we were told last week, there's four, I believe, in detention. That would, that's what generals.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um.
And they would be detention beds only?
Yes. Now, there'd be maybe some, um, the director of probation said it'd be, if there's room out there, they can put our services out there to come in, different types of counseling. Um, yeah, like, like we have right now for the PRC inmates. There's different counseling agencies that come in and do different types of programming with them there. And it'd be the same type thing that we could, we could utilize some of that space for those programs.
So do you recommend withdrawing this application? We did the pre-application back in June, and we were invited to apply. And I've already submitted a draft, so do I withdraw it?
Um.
Or would you be willing to still be?
What is our deadline? Do we have?
We found other, other maps for it. Would you be willing to?
When's the deadline?
If we found other, other match for it, would you be willing to serve as applicant?
Yeah, when's the deadline? Oh, we can't tell you what.
Monday is the submission.
The submission.
When would we be on the hook for the match?
Once they told you we were awarded.
Yeah, and that would be in April.
And even then, essentially, if you get awarded, you could deny the award if you chose not to. The other part doing that is that hurts your future.
Right, right, right. It's not so hard. It doesn't look good on our behalf. I mean, one of the things in the discussion Matt pointed out.
That's the director of juvenile probation.
No, 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 Matt.
Oh, it's Matt. Okay.
That, um, with these feasibility studies, uh, there's possibility that it can help you get state funding down the road because you have the study and you can say, here it is. So there is a little bit of, um, yeah, you're paying for something you may or may not feel like you need informationally, but someone else needs it. You know, it's kind of like paying for an appraisal on a house when everyone knows what the house is worth, but if you're in a state or you're in a divorce, sometimes you need that legal document. Um, so we, I, I get that aspect of it too. Um, and if, if we spend money to make money, then that's great. We just don't want to spend money that we don't need to spend and get no real return on it when we're just finding out what we already know.
Would you stand as the applicant if other sources of match outside county funding were there? Where all you would have to do would be serve as applicant.
Sure, like a pass through. That'd be great. My hands out. Something we can do.
Well, this is second, sorry, I mean.
Would, would the county stand as a pass through as the applicant? Because the entity that would manage a center doesn't exist yet. So there is no applicant if you don't want to be a applicant. But if, uh, if the DA's office could come up with the match elsewhere, could, could the county be the pass through for this project? It's a three-month project, so it's not like a five-year.
I mean, I think so. I guess you just have to make sure that ARC would allow it to.
Exactly.
Because sometimes they don't allow passers. So you would have to just make sure.
So the question is basically, do we work on the immediate need of detention? And the facility that we have, that we can go down that avenue that everybody's in agreement with? Or do we take part of those monies and put it towards a study for a long-term solution? That is a rehabilitation type solution. And I think that's the difference right now.
Yeah, how much of this study is about the long-term?
Well, the whole application was written from that perspective of a long-term big center. Um, but yesterday and the day before that I crafted, um, uh, the addition of examining La Cumbre County's needs, immediate needs, and the possible rehab of a, of an existing facility. And afterward, we called the consultant that we've been working with and they said, yeah, we'll do that for the state money. They have a lot of experience rehabbing adult prisons and adult facilities. So they said we could do that. And actually, its target cost for doing what you're proposing was pretty similar to yours. As far as how much would the cost be structured?
Yeah. And, and we started looking at Ken and started drawing with that.
Yeah, he's just trying to get the requirements for the, the rooms, like the, the physical construction requirements, size, materials, types of doors, you know, those things to make the real cost.
And out there we have a separate entrance. We would lease it out. Uh, why would do an RFP to lease it out to a juvenile uh, organization that has experience with this?
They also own.
Yeah.
And the only thing I would caution is that that's something too that the feasibility study's got to tell us. Say it, or we own it and contract the services to run it. That, all that has to be identical.
Yeah, I was gonna say like, we don't want to waste the money, but we also, this is an important project and we don't want to, you know, what is it, penny wise and dollar foolish or whatever the cliche is. I don't even know if I use that right, but we, we, we want to be careful that we don't go too cheap, that we end up hamstringing ourselves as we go forward this project. Yeah, it's, it's interesting. It's an interesting.
But we also know we can only afford what we can afford, correct?
We take it out of what we pay our solicitor.
Is there a motion or?
Yeah, we already made the motion to. That's how we do have a first effect.
Discussion. We've made, you know, we've made, we should have a discussion. We can always table if we want to. We can withdraw a motion and table if we want to.
Um, we have to, they have to know by Monday.
Actually by today. Well, because I have tomorrow to
I was gonna say, because we're closed.
Government can get it submitted.
So you got, one at a time.
It's, it's ninety-nine percent done, but some forms will have to be adjusted.
And, and when would this be available again?
The kind of, I was told by Steve that, uh, all the stars align and you know how that goes when the federal government does or doesn't pass the budget. But, uh, they said, I think what first, there should be a contract and then you put contract with, uh, up in something. So planning study and data collection and then design.
But, but if we tabled the actions today and it, and it stopped you from putting the application in on Monday, when would be the next time you'd be able to put an application for such a great?
I don't know. I don't think I would target ARC funding based on your station, but I targeted ARC funding because they fund feasibility, fund design and they fund, um, site development and they fund construction. And they have much bigger money than state program. And I would try to pair state programs to it as this would have costly venture. But based on what they said, I don't know if ARC would be the appropriate vehicle for funding something.
If it were, would some of those monies be available to, to the rehabilitation of the existing structure?
Yeah. Because the whole ARC concept is predicated on job creation and, um, community services that, um, enable somebody to get that job, meaning those goods. And that would be subtracted out of the.
So it's not, the study isn't just feasibility. It's design, construction.
It's, it's construction cost. And then the capacity capacity that you really need.
That's for something new. That's not for renovation or rehab.
Or something.
Oh.
Actually, for both, it's been a lot of things. And then add all the aggregate from the other counties around to that need and see what's most suitable. That's what it's about.
I think the first important point that she mentioned was the capacity required. Determines that.
I mean, my thought would be at, at this point, I think we gotta look at the, the immediate need and not the future need. So to spend thirty-eight thousand for a future need while, while we have budget restraints, probably not fiscally responsible.
I mean, let me ask this question to you. So if we don't do this, we're just focused on our immediate need at um, renovating and, you know, transforming part of what we already have out at the farm. Um, who? If we vote this down, does that delay that process at all? Does that even, does this even affect that process? So this
Doesn't affect the short term.
The short term. This vote is all about the long term.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, doesn't affect the short term at all.
Okay. Well, then I'm ready.
Okay. Um, we have a motion. We have a second. All fair side. Close?
Next.
So tonight, three oh. Okay, thank you. If there's another avenue of sources or revenue, that could be a pass through, you know.
Oh, is, I can still submit the application with other funding as match, not for the county.
Not from the county. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's great.
Yep. Glad to continue those conversations with you in the future to try to look for a different avenue for you to go. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Comment? Uh, next week is gonna be, starting Sunday, it's gonna be extremely cold. Uh, through next Thursday, temperature forecasted. Uh, ask you to please, uh, bring your pets in. You have pets outside. It boggles my mind how people can keep their pets out, sub-degree temperatures. That's not a purpose of a pet. And ask you to please take care of it and please check on your neighbors, especially the elderly. Make sure that they're, they're warm and their furnaces are working and just check on your neighbors just to make sure. This is gonna be a very, very cold week. Um, and then we have, then we have, uh, Martin Luther King Day on Monday. There's special events for that day. Uh, we have play activities throughout the community. Uh, please feel free to attend any services or I believe there's a, a walk. If you have time to join in and, and, uh, participate because it's extremely important day, the indoor walk.
It's a terrible call.
Underwall. Yeah, bundle up.
Um, to piggyback off that, uh, with, with Martin Luther King Day coming up. Um, I just wanted to tell, I, I tell this to the kids that I'm around, um, watch the movie Selma if you've never seen it. Um, and I'm, I'm surprised at how many people have not seen it, but it doesn't have a flashy title. It's just named after a town, but, um, it was a very important, um, time in American history. It was about to break the boat. But, uh, the, the Dr. King led, um, and I learned a lot watching that movie about, you know, that time in American history. Uh, also the I Have a Dream speech. I don't know if I said this last year. When he read, um, the I Have a Dream speech, uh, in Washington, in the original, uh, in his written speech, the phrase, I had a dream, I have a dream did not exist. And, and when you listen to it, I think the whole speech is like twelve or thirteen minutes long. At the beginning, it's very, uh, colloquial. It's very, uh, literate, we should say, and about halfway, maybe two-thirds of the way through the speech, he just kind of went off track and just ad-libbed the rest of it. And he had used the phrase, I had a, I have a dream in earlier speeches. And he didn't want to recycle it. But then he did as the speech went along. And when you listen, you can hear the verbiage change um, to, to where it, well, from where he left the script to where he kind of just, like the last four and a half minutes, he just spoke off the top of his head. So it's fascinating that one of the most famous speeches in American history that's known as the I Have a Dream speech, it wasn't, he wasn't supposed to say it at all. Um, and the last thing I wanted to mention was just with Nikki, who, uh, has left because she didn't want to listen to us for the rest of the meeting. But in lots of places in life, when you have transitioned jobs, um, sometimes you sit there and you say, if this person quits, I don't know who's gonna take over in this. And, um, our, our board had a, had a good relationship with Krista. Um, when she decided to move on, uh, we were very happy that Nikki is just gonna smoothly, uh, hop in. Um, Nikki and her team, we've worked with very well. And there was not a, there was not one second of like, oh my gosh, if Krista retires, who's gonna take over? Like, we're, we're happy with the team that they have and, and we like working with Nikki and so it's again, it's one of the, the fortunate things for us because we've all been in places in the world where somebody quits and you don't know who's gonna take over. You're not excited about who's gonna take over. And here at the county, we're very lucky for, to have Nikki and, and her team that, that she has assembled to move forward.
Public service is not easy and to spend two decades doing that is a testament. I want to thank Krista for her two, twenty years of, of services, county and the residents of La Cumbre County. We wish her well. One personally thank her. You have anything, nothing to add? No? Guys, take good.
Thanks.
Other comment? Yes, Mr. Wols. Would you like to come up, please?
Handouts.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just give mine right to him.
So I got one for you. Gentlemen, uh, on behalf of the county retirees, I've been asked to, uh, offer this, uh, request to you. Uh, we are proud to be La Cumbre County retirees. And we ask that you consider providing limited, and I emphasize limited support, to enable our volunteer leaders to arrange and convene La Cumbre County retirees for meetings to receive briefings and updates by county commissioners and appropriate county staff on matters that concern all of us as county residents. At our meetings, we often learn of new developments, plus retiree members share matters of interest. And we greatly appreciate it when county commissioners can attend and brief us on relevant items. In the past, we use the retiree dues to cover activities that we made donations to local nonprofits. But we can no longer afford that. Since our members do pay ten dollars annual dues and each attending retiree pays for their own lunch, we respectfully ask that the county commissioners, county controller approve the cost of preparing and mailing retired meeting notices and a related fee if that lunch site charges a fee as was the practice for years. So please call me or one of our committee members if you need to discuss this. Thank you very much. And this is a list of our committee members.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any questions?
Thank you. Our HR, Mike Hagan here. What's being done currently, Mike?
Okay. First, postage is going up. We're looking at almost three thousand dollars when we send stuff out sporadically. We requested that we try and figure out all the dates for the year and then send out one mailing with, with everything. Uh, on top of that, we'll have a postcard, which we can give anybody that retires that goes to me downstairs to try and save costs. Uh, it's just, it's very, it's tough when we get something to try and quickly turn it. We have stuff going on already, uh, because it's, it's not playing. Uh, where that was it, just to ask this strategically, think forward of all Perkins, hey, what do you got going on in June? What do you got going on in September? Can we book this spot? Can we book this spot? We get things happen, but we can't turn stuff instantly, um, because we're taking away from other operations that we're doing. Excellent. I mean, that was our big thing. We're, postage is continually going up. Um, we've offered two to try and make an email list. Or I presented at one time, change the dues to twelve dollars to those that want the mailing. Uh, so we can at least get something back. And that, that's just something I've learned from like the DFW. Um, if you want the, the mailing to come to you, you pay twelve dollars. Otherwise, you're gonna get an email for ten. This email's free. It's just, we gotta try and think of better methods to get the word out with saving money instead of just continually throwing out the cause, so.
So Mr. Wols, if, if planning could be done yearly, like if you could do a yearly planner, get those dates to HR, they can mail that one time per year. That'd save an enormous amount of postage. And then, uh, possibly raise, like he said, raise a fee, maybe two bucks for people who wanted, well, a mailing list and an email list. Try to have the two lists to, to try to cut expenses that way too. Is your email list fairly, fairly large or not?
I think it, I think it was. So I, I think that's
I'm just curious of how, you know, I mean, obviously since they're, they're older residents, do they have, are they looking at email? Are they looking at the website?
Can we do the website and, I mean, we can update that. Can we do the website and I mean, we can update that, um, as well too, to, to. Put people towards that. We thought just, you know, the postcard just to make extras. And if someone interim within the year retires, just. As a out process, hey, here's your. Retiree meal dates if you wanna go attend or.
Like at that time, they, some I don't even know if they know there's a retiree organization. That way at, uh, at retirement, you can hand them that card and they can, you know, pen one and maybe join.
Yeah, it's, it's getting the word out. I mean.
I like. I like that. Sweet. We, we don't know.
Retired.
Who's, who's retiring. But that would be great.
So these are all solutions. If you take them back and.
I, I would be glad to do that.
We're willing to work with you and, uh. We have to have a little give and take too.
I would be glad to do that. I'll give you my card so we could get a touch.
Yeah.
I'm the Florida deposit post.
Yeah.
No longer 13 cents.
So may I report accurately that? The commissioners would be receptive to working this out?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Still a bit more planning and. Working together.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Get our people to come. Be online.
Hold on Larry in the back.
Oh, Larry, yes.
Save the worst for last.
Sorry, Stiles from Montgomery PDA. Um, I just wanted to throw in, uh, to, towards, uh. His remarks about Martin Luther King Day and specifically about that speech. Uh, I did, um. Management training for quite a while and, and public speaking was one of them. And I used that speech. As, as the best, uh, public speech that has ever been, uh, shown. I mean. And, and we don't really appreciate it because unfortunately the I have a dream is all anybody really. Takes from that, which is certainly an important part, but. Just think about for a moment, it was in, in 1963, which was a hundred years. Since the, uh.
Civil War.
Well, civil war, but also the emancipation proclamation by Lincoln. He's standing with Lincoln right behind him. So it was by that emphasis, you couldn't find a better, you know, uh. Position. I mean, to be able to have a talk where you're going to then start out with. Five. How did he put it? Um, three, um, four score, well, it was five score. He was saying a hundred years ago, but he could have just said a hundred years ago, but he didn't. He used the same wording. That Lincoln did, which would have automatically triggered, people that actually know a little bit about it would have thought, oh. And then it was, it was designed with the past, the present and the future. Almost all in perfect, uh, it, that part of it was as good as it could be. And what had happened is he had the people and it was at the end of the day. He was, it was hot. They were all just wanted to go home on probably. But here this guy gives a 12 minute. Just absolutely, cause he had 10. He was given 10 minutes. He went, okay, I'm gonna stretch it to 12. And, and literally it was. You know, everybody was just fascinated and I think it was, um. Oh, what was her name?
Yeah, the singer.
The singer. I can't remember her name, but she said, because he, he didn't want to stop. He knew he had them, but how do you? You know, okay, thank you. Goodbye. And, and. Oh, Ilia, um.
Yes.
What's her name? Thank you. Yes. She said. Art, tell them about this, the dream, tell them about the dream. Cause she had been with him. For several years in the South as they were doing that. So, and that again, that was off the cuff, but it was something he'd been using for years. I mean, it was just, it was just, uh, all those were things that he had, had taken. Uh, so it, it really, I mean, you can't. Like I said, it would be something that. We have this day. It's the only day, uh, that actually is to a person. Uh, of our, of our national, uh, days, we have all these various. Uh, things, but only one has a name to it and that's Martin Luther King Day. So given that, let's take a 15 minutes and. Go into your computer and read that thing because, because I don't think it, it is. It should be something that. Uh, it's worth reading once a year. But honestly, I think it, it says as much about what America is and should be than anything else, uh. That we've had, so.
I know I told this story last year. And I'm sure everyone hangs on our every word. But, um, the guy, and I can't think of his name, but he was, he was a college basketball coach, UCLA. Was it? Walt Hazard, Larry? I can't remember his name off the top of my head, but he was, uh, um, he was a basketball player at Villanova at the time. And because he was six, eight or whatever, uh, he was asked, will you? Be security on the stage? And I think he just showed up at the event. And then when he's six, nine, they're like, hey, you can work security. So. And he said he had a book with him. Because it was gonna be a long day. He's like, so I took a book because I didn't know. So when he was, when, uh, when the speech was over, he said. Martin Luther King walked past and he goes, here kid, you want this? And he handed him the speech. So the kid folded up and, and the kid, and now he's in the college, or he's in the basketball hall of fame, um. And, uh, he said years later, and I think it was just with recently because I just read the story recently. He was on the phone with his mother. Okay, maybe it wasn't here because his mother would be passed away by now. But he's on the phone with his mother and they were talking about this story. He goes, you know. He, I think he gave me that speech. So he went to his library. And he's like, all right, what, what were my favorite books and what book would I have taken with me? And he leafed through a couple of books and he had. The copy of the speech and now it is on loan. Either. It's either like, I think Villanova has it sometimes and maybe the Smithsonian has it sometimes, but he has since donated the speech back to. But, um, yeah, it sat in a, it was folded up in a book. For 20 or 30 years.
I can tell you in people around the world, I mean, I've been, I, I don't know how many countries I've been to. That I've used that. And I have never had anybody say, gee, that was a waste of time. I mean, everyone. Where is, is, is amazed that just how. I wouldn't, nothing's perfect, but it's close to perfection. In, in getting across a concept like that. Uh, I think it's, I think.
It's on YouTube. You, I mean, you, I listen to it every year and you can hear it. Um, and I just wanted to remind like. Now, I mean, for my generation who wasn't alive then, we associate, you know, Martin Luther King with the speech. But the, the movie Selma has nothing to do with the speech. The movie Selma is about the right to vote. And it goes into all the other things and a little bit of the, I say rivalry with Malcolm X and their different approaches. Um, to the same goal, but how, and, uh. So it, it, Selma is a, was a fascinating movie to me. And it had nothing to do with the I Have A Dream speech, but it was one of the great accomplishments of Dr. King's. And I think when he gave the speech, he was only like 28 years old, wasn't he? Isn't he?
I'm not sure.
Didn't he, wasn't he thirty? Wasn't he 36 when he? Died, maybe? I don't know. He was young. He was, he, he didn't get, he didn't live to be 40. So all this stuff happened when he was so young. So anyway, for that to work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you. Any online?
Uh, some comments from Thomas. Morning Lake County County, I realize I'm on a single drumbeat. But I think it's imperative to encourage our lawmakers and government agencies. We're required to clean our forests and waterways, pizza. The benefits are many, the costs are justified as in action. Cost becomes. I think funds can run from some. Those programs in using the very. Down offset some costs. Also to require power and service lines. Cables and utility halls. Cleared by the utilities within 30 days or notice. If they. If their workers are too busy. They should be required to some like. Private contractors can. Lastly, he says you should have. Homeless in history, yes, here we meet. On permit.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we completed our agenda, so we are adjourned. We'll be back here on Thursday, January 23rd at 10 a.m. Thank you. Have a good day.